...their whole business bring up. Okay, going to new business. Need to approve the magistrate report.
I'm down the road.
No, Felix got now.
I'm sorry.
You got your mother all.
Runs in the family, runs in the family.
We'll need a motion through the magistrate.
Outside.
Steve?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Stan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Next one's the overhead door for the maintenance building for John's building over here. That one needs replaced. It's coming apart, coming down. I mean, it could be falling down anytime soon. So, we need to... What do you call?
Think you want that way?
Okay, 'cause I think we got, I think we got a price on that.
Well, Lucius is pretty good. He might want a better one than our price wise.
Was he, was he fixing something else?
Well, we need to maintain it because it's bad again.
Well, it's got, yeah.
Yep.
Safety, safety is what we're talking about.
The overhead door over there.
Trish or who?
No, uh, Lucius.
Lucius.
Yeah. I use them quite a lot.
Cause he used, uh, he used a picture of ours over there.
Door. Uh.
The overhead door and that, did we get, did Lucius tell us how much it was or?
It was like fourteen hundred bucks.
Fourteen hundred dollars.
That one's not, that's pretty reasonable. That one's not an odd sized door, that's a standard door. These ones out here, those were all bent at the top. Them storms last year, that wind comes straight from that direction and it bowed mine in and it bowed the two out here and... But they put some truss thing on these things and pulled them back in. They're still on it out there. I got that done for a couple hundred bucks, but my door actually has no support on it where the opener goes on it and it's, it's tearing clear across.
We need to take the board of commons.
You need a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. So, you got that money then go, go use the meeting tour.
There it goes, Joyce. Steve?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Joyce? Stan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
I don't want it to be like that after we don't deal with it.
Yeah, it's good price. Yeah, that's not bad.
Well, the rip will just end up tearing off before.
He's gonna have a door he just drive in and out anytime. Okay, I got under here where the fire levy is coming up. It's a three point oh mill that's come and due and it's gonna have to be put on the ballot. Uh, we don't have to do that, no, no, but, um... It's just for more, for your information. And I got on the next one is park levy renewal. The second one is coming up, the point five mill, but we don't know how to do it yet. I talked to Julie Atkins and, and, cause we won't, if the school is not there, if it's O four, then we have to do something. We have to find another means, but she's looking into, she's got ideas and stuff and we'll get the job done one way or the other.
What it is, if that does, if we do go to the...
That'll have to be, this'll have to be upon this next election too.
So, I mean, I guess my question is if, if we do, they do consolidate or put together?
Well, it's not a consolidation.
But not consolidation, but if they absorb it?
It's actually a transfer of territory, it's gonna be O four.
Yeah.
Not do the best bill.
No, I understand that, but I, I mean, would that, how would that affect then, would they be eligible for the levy too? Like, like we pay our school tax?
You'd have to put it on new.
Yeah.
You wouldn't have a levy anymore.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so we'd have to put a, we...
But I don't thi- it's not gonna happen this year, I don't think. By the way, they talked. We got that commission meeting that we're doing, we have like a hundred and twenty days to get things back.
Gary, can I have your backup on the fire levy? He said it's three point oh mils. Is that for five years?
I think it's four.
Four years.
For four years? And that's with the village?
Yes, that's with the village.
Okay, and you want that on the November election?
Uh-huh.
Okay, I'm gonna start giving you guys resolutions and stuff. Does that affect, cause you gotta get it done early.
Yeah.
And everything has to be done before the ninety days prior to the election, so we actually do not have much time.
So, we have, we do have, we're gonna do this.
You have one before August, right?
Yeah, it, it was this April, so actually we're on a short leash already.
Well, I'm just saying, if we're gonna do the, the double meetings per month, I'll probably do it next week, try to, that's, I don't know.
Well, and I've gotta also make sure I'm up to date with the fire sections. I've been doing police and park levies left and right, but it's probably been four years since I've done a fire levy, so I have to make sure I'm up to date.
Okay.
With that.
Okay.
But, yeah, we're gonna wanna, so we're gonna wanna get on that right away. It's three point oh. Okay, 'cause, 'cause after the first resolution, then I've gotta give it to our county auditor and then we have to accept, I mean, and then I have to get the language together. There's a lot that goes into it, so.
Okay.
I've gotta move, and a, a meeting a month, this is, if we're gonna have multiple meetings in a month, this is a good time.
Next two meetings, or next two months, we'll have two meetings.
And now, if, if this is a renewal levy, right? Right, and you all want it, right?
Yes.
There's probably not a soul in this town that doesn't want it. So, I'm gonna be asking also to waive three reading rules on this, because you're in such a, just count down. May, June, July, August. We don't have enough time for three readings on any of this. Okay? But we'll need five people at a meeting in order to waive the three reading rule. And this is for resolution one, then I got stuff to do, and then this is for the next resolution, and then I got stuff to do as well with, with the board of elections, with the auditor, with the language, and it has to go down to the state for approval also, Columbus, so.
It'll take some time.
Yeah, so I'm gonna be presenting you stuff now.
Okay.
I'm not, not now, but as soon as I possibly can.
Okay. Gary, what you ready to chat for?
Um, yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm quick to check.
No, the park, but how many years is the park one? How many years was the park one?
It's about three.
Three years?
Three.
We won't even know where it is until...
Yeah, but it's, it's new.
Well, by the way, you know, if we do get stuck with one, you can do it for five years if we have to start fresh.
Okay.
Just so you know.
There isn't any way that the park can be sliced away from the school, is there?
But, I mean...
I don't think you want to.
You don't want to.
If you have a larger tax base than supporting the park.
Yeah, but if they don't okay the levy, we're gonna be...
No.
The school won't be Betsville School.
No, it's not gonna be Betsville, it's gonna be O four.
So... So, do you want the largest tax base you can for that park, but I don't know how you're gonna do this.
But we can't pass a levy in Old Ford School District, can we? Don't they have to present that?
What? I, you, you're asking me, I, I have, you know, as far as what's going on with the schools, I...
No, I understand that.
I don't know what they're doing.
No, I don't either, but...
You're saying, what you're saying is if, if it becomes O four now, then O four could possibly do it if we could have some...
They would have to put a levy on for our park.
Yes.
We can't put a levy on for our park.
Right, we can't put our own because it'd only be for Betsville.
No, that's...
We wouldn't get no base to it.
And it would only be for Seneca County residents. Cause O four's both Seneca County and their school district, Seneca and...
Well, that must be up to how they worded it, that wouldn't really have to do with us.
Yeah, but there's other ways we can do it too, so we're looking to now.
Yeah, look at options.
Julie's got some ideas, so.
Just look at options, we can probably do something.
I was just looking here to see, when do you want the next meeting for April? There's like the...
Third, how about the thirteenth?
Oh, the thirteenth, do you have any?
We're in New Rigo.
I'm, I'm wherever Bonnie is.
So, is there anything on the twenty second?
I'm okay that night.
What day of the week is that?
That's the Tuesday, be a fourth Tuesday.
Yeah. Do you have anything on that, Bonnie?
No, I'm okay on that.
Is it?
So, I mean, you're okay.
The fourth?
Twenty ninth and then...
The fourth?
We have, we have, we have court tomorrow and we have court on the thirtieth.
On the thirtieth?
Yes, cause we have two courts in April.
Well, doesn't have to be on Tuesday, it's gonna be on another night or...
Well, that's awfully close to the next one though.
Two weeks.
It's two weeks away.
My schedule's a little...
Yeah, two weeks.
No, I, I was talking, the thirtieth is too close to, um, May's.
Fifteenth is in two weeks, so.
But Bonnie said that wrecking numbers are newer.
Yeah, she's got New Rigo, we'll be in New Rigo on the fifteenth.
Okay, alright.
Well, the twenty second is two weeks away from their regular meet, your regular meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, let me see.
Twenty second be okay?
Well, okay, now, if this is a special meeting, you gotta indicate exactly what it's for, you gotta stick to what it's for. And it's gonna be announced to the village. So, and, and I can't guarantee the fire levy stuff is ready in two weeks.
Well, no, that's okay, we can, we can kinda do.
But if it's limited to the park, or, you know, you've gotta pick what the subject matter is and limit it to that subject.
The park.
So, it can't be listed as a regular meeting? It has to be listed as a special?
It's gotta be a special meeting.
Yeah, cause we only do one month, so that's...
Do you know what you want your special meeting for exactly?
Park?
So, that's open for several discussions.
Fourth of July celebrations for the park?
What issues besides Fourth of July celebration?
Well, it's organizing, organizing celebration.
Well, probably you don't organize parks or...
Yeah. I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of things that you gotta discuss.
I'm just saying, whatever issues you have, you have to announce ahead of time.
Yeah, we will write them down, let them do all the special...
And, and of course, you, well, we got Bonnie here, but always remember, besides posting the, the news organization present and as true, it always has to be notified whenever there's a special meeting as well.
Your notified line.
I'm notified, yeah, okay.
I'm just, for future reference, it always has to be.
You just keep this on, I don't know.
Right, need a table too.
Do we have to put a specific list of items that we're gonna discuss about the park, or we can just put that we're gonna discuss?
Could you just say park summer season twenty fourteen?
You, you, well, you, and, but, you, you can make it broad, all park issues, I don't know, whatever that may be.
That's what we're looking for.
You may wanna make it as broad as you possibly can, so that you can discuss any issue that...
Anything that pertains to the park.
But if you limit it, then it has to be limited to that subject matter alone, there's no other factor.
Park open enrollment.
Something's gotta come up.
Yeah.
So, we did proceed.
And that, that's all you're discussing that now?
Just all park issues?
Park issues, I know, general issues.
Well, we got a couple weeks to do.
Yeah, we can just say, we can might discuss more stuff.
Well, you'll need to list it.
Well, I know.
You haven't notified us yet.
In forty eight hours before the meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
But we, I'm saying, we got time.
When are you sneaking in, Chuck?
If something else comes up, you know.
You're on the hot seat.
Okay. Okay, we got that part settled up. Uh, next one, I would like council's approval on appointing Trish Bryan James Channel to the park committee, that'll give me a full committee then.
Who's Kendall?
He's a, he's gonna be coach for Little League and, he lives right over by the bus garage over there.
Oh, okay.
Luke Quinn, Gary?
What Tr- one of them will take care of Trish Channels and the other will be Aaron Smith. There are other things coming up to do, so. And that just, that just fills up there.
Okay, I'll make motions and...
Okay. Okay.
Second that.
Is that you, Steve?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Trust me. Well, council members, I have no idea who these people are.
Well, you know Trish.
I know you, I mean, you're saying they're good?
You know Trish Bryan.
I probably do if I ran into the person, but...
She's been here before.
She works at the county.
She's, she's the one that's got people wanting, people walking around, people all the time.
Okay, alright, alright, I, I just got...
You've always got the long skirt on.
You're, you're stoish, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it started out to be Steve and ended up being Joyce, it's stoish.
Okay, did we do it?
I think we did it.
Okay. Okay, next is ordinance number twenty fourteen dash O nine. We didn't, this is something that came up that we have to correct. Uh, so we don't get in trouble with the auditor. Uh, an ordinance reaffirming the hiring of Carolyn Tompkins at the rate of eight dollars an hour as village water sewer clerk for the village of Betsville and declaring emergency.
I made motion to declare emergency.
I need most disposable services.
Outset.
Bill?
Bill, yeah, give it to Bill.
He's aggressive.
You're just learning it?
Scott?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to declare new work.
Steve.
Again?
Oh.
Nope, she can't raise your hand, maybe back where you're at.
Who said that?
Joyce. I had that kick under the table.
Steve?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is presented by?
I'll make motion.
Second?
Steve.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Rob?
Just...
Here, I just have, do you have to, um, have an ordinance that she lives in Tiffin and not in the village?
We don't, we can't require her to live in the village, can we?
She lives in Tiffin.
No, actually, Linda, the Ohio Supreme Court says you cannot require an employee to live in the municipality.
Okay.
So, if somebody lives out of the municipality, that's their right.
Okay, but...
And you cannot require that they live in the municipality.
Okay, I just know that we had to with John.
Wait, you know, when did they change that, Rick?
Yeah.
Ohio Supreme Court?
Yeah.
That's been around for probably seven years.
Cause there's been some...
And all of a sudden, you'll find that, for example, a lot of people in Fostoria moved the heck out of Fostoria and who knows where the heck they lived out on the lake or...
Yeah, guys.
Well, I know that villages, you know, fiscal officers, when they started hiring fiscal officers, they, they have permission for them to be out.
Well, at first, when you were treasurer, when you were treasurer, you were affected and of course you had to be in it.
Correct, so when they hired outside the village.
But as an employee, but as an employee, um, you know, Ohio Supreme Court says you can't require employees to design...
Exactly, but I didn't know it was still...
Alright.
How, how did Carolyn Tompkins get into that position in the first place? The gal that we're talking about, Carolyn Tompkins, how did she get that job in the first place?
She got hired for, um, for applying for it, where it put it in the paper or...
Oh, that's discussed, but we didn't do an ordinance, so we had to make a show, that's what it is.
Yeah, we discussed it and everything, but we didn't do the ordinance.
To make it so illegal, so. But we did the resume, or the resume there, the application.
Yeah, we did that.
We did the newspaper for applicants. So, that's how, that's how it came about, Stan. How long has she been doing it, or when was she hired, you remember, last June? Been that long?
Goes bypassing.
A little behind on that too.
Thanks. You're having fun. Andrew, that one, so I don't take it with me and you go, let me go, I have to come back. Um, wanted to bring up two, uh, the Legion's having their annual Easter egg hunt out to the park on April the twelfth at one o'clock. And it's for ages nine years and younger. And rain date is April nineteenth.
Yeah?
April twelfth.
I hang on.
At one P M.
Yeah, I'm running out of grain. They're getting older, getting older.
Thank God.
Was he an ankle biter, I wanted to know.
She's kind of bitter, isn't she?
Chair, I don't have a bitter leg.
He hasn't been to the leg, ankle lately.
No, not like...
You got it all there for Bonnie?
Yeah, I had everything put away.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
You forget where you're at, Bonnie.
You got a sign like that there.
Yeah. You got a date or something?
Yeah, you get this done.
Okay, meeting dates, magistrate court's April second?
And the thirtieth.
And the thirtieth?
Yes.
At six o'clock.
We do it every four weeks.
And then, park committee meeting is gonna be this, this Sunday, April sixth at one P M back here.
I got some new business too, I just wanted to...
Okay, that's fine, let's go.
I guess, well, I wanna tell you, first off, talk about John's excellent service he did this year for winter and all this stuff and, and my concern is that, you know, he is a sour, a sour physician and really, he's worked at a lot of overtime, so he has like a compensation for, plus all his water breaks and all that stuff. And I just think that he probably ought to at least consider some kind of extra compensation for all this extra hours he put in there. He wasn't part of the normal winters and stuff, I don't know what you guys think about that stuff, but I just think he's been...
I agree with you.
I mean, he's been harsh.
I'm, I'm watching him down there fight that water break in front of what you call it, South, those bright lights in the middle of the night and I'm driving by, it's the man, I'm glad I'm not him.
Yeah, yeah, but you know, I mean, I...
I mean, he has so much... He's gonna buy at eleven o'clock at night with...
You know, and I just, I think it's, it's, you know, it's...
He's awake at four o'clock in the morning, he's gonna buy two bread.
Yeah, you know, so, I mean, we've all, was able to get to work and stuff because of, I mean, baseball, the snow we had, I don't think any of us really, we had work trouble, once we got out of town, then we probably did in town, you know, realistically.
Town was real good, it was real good.
You know, and he did an awesome job, and I just think that, you know, we ought to at least consider some kind of compensation or something, but I think we ought to just discuss it and see what you guys think, but...
How about dozen donuts, John?
How much you got on you?
I'm not behind any of this. I...
No, but I think it's, I mean, no, I think it's important as, as a community to take care of your employees as well. And you're saying that, you know, if you wanna have community grow and stuff, I mean, we all know, this was not the normal winter, at least I hope it's not. You know, the future has been before, but at the same token, I think, the problem is when you put somebody in a sour position and you expect them to do the waste treatment, you know, snow removal and water line repairs and all that stuff, you got one guy and he gets the, the extra help now and, I mean, it's, it's quite a bit of a burden that, at least ought to get some kind of consideration.
And it's been, I mean, for just for his snow removal, he there for a long time, he's only, only had two days off for a month. You know? I mean, he's put out a lot. He really has.
I didn't realize it was a salary position, I thought, no, no. And I, I think that's, you know, I guess, when I look, I mean, basically, I mean, if you look at, you know, it's from thirty nine five, I mean, that's what he gets compensated, but you look at the big picture, you step back, look what he's always doing and compared to a lot of the people in society who are similar occupations, I mean, I mean, there's no sort of compensation fairness. We need to find that balance, my opinion, but I just wanted to bring, bring it to the council's attention and some good thing, you know?
I agree, that's a good idea.
So, I don't know.
And do you have something in mind?
I'm thinking fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars or something, cause I mean, if you think that, wow, the overtime, that somebody else would've got compensated for all those hours, I think that's some kind of a fair number, but I don't know what you guys think about that.
I'll tell you what, we're in a skilled trade, that's, that's, even, even though, that, that's kinda low balling.
Well, I, I know, I'm open to more, I'm just saying, I just, I wanna be, but you gotta watch the budget too, I'm just joking.
I understand, I'm just saying, I, I don't, I don't begrudge that two thousand all.
Okay.
Not at all, so.
The water break alone would've been more than that in one night.
Oh, yeah, I know.
To have it repaired.
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah. And, you know, I mean, hopefully, hopefully, doing these pump things and stuff, it's always those problems where it's not as, as it is, but anytime you have a change of weather, you always have these issues and it's, and let's face it, probably most of the water lines, probably eighty years old or more.
Not quite. I was twelve.
Not, not twelve. Forty nine.
Yeah, I mean, forty nine. No, I was ten.
Okay, you mean like yesterday, right? Is it like yesterday?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, you wanna put that in the form of a motion?
I'll make a motion to compensate John, I mean, it's how we...
What'd you say, two thousand?
Two thousand dollars, that's what I'm thinking.
Before we do that, John, do you have any idea of hours, I mean, do you jot them down, like how many extra hours or anything? Cause if we're low balling it, you know, we might have a lot more hours in than we're...
Yeah, I don't want, like I said, I don't know, I'm just saying...
We don't know how much.
Well, I'm sure you're gonna be appreciative of what...
I'm grateful that you're even considering, so...
Yeah, but I'm just saying...
Well, we meet in the middle, say twenty five?
You say eight forty five?
Twenty five hundred.
Twenty five.
Now, is that gonna be a compensation, or is that gonna, you know, cause it's probably gonna be taxed too, right?
It'll be taxed, yeah, it'll be taxed.
It's not a lot of money.
No, it's not a lot. Don't put it in papers or his wife knows about it.
Drop the pen.
Don't put it in papers or his wife knows about it, I'm just saying.
Yeah, you have slush one, right?
Yeah, boy.
You know, I still have buried guys that are okay.
Shoebox up in the corner with cash in it.
So, so what, we thinking twenty five?
Twenty five hundred. So, is that what you want me to make motion for twenty five hundred then? I'll make motion for twenty five hundred. I think it's the right thing to do.
Yeah.
Is that you, Stan?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay.
I have one other.
Good, John, you're fine.
One more thing.
I guess, you know.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah, I just say, I guess I really want to talk to Stan, I guess I want to really air this, the police, the police situation out with Stan, with Stan a little bit. I mean, the issue comes down to, you know, Stan, you initiated the email saying, you know, you know, what about our police coverage on, on last, was it Saturday?
Whatever, you know.
But guy, I guess, we got two issues going there. First off, we gotta get Brandon Chance to go with something. But on the same, same token, it wasn't that long ago when we had a discussion that, you know, we couldn't have these meetings and that if sent out a mass text or email or whatever to each one of the council members, I mean, that kind of constitutes a meeting without, you know, a public intervention there so that, you know, you have the sunshine. So I, we gotta be careful. I mean, I mean, I understand your position, but you gotta kind of think about what you said here before he was in the council, you know, that we were just having these meetings without.
Right.
You know, and so that, that, that kind of, you gotta be careful because that's what that does.
Because it's kind of too full, too, because here you're saying, okay, we don't have any police coverage in town. Oh, I'm a robber, I'm coming to town, I'm.
Well, I didn't tell anybody other than the text I sent to you, you and you.
It was on the Facebook.
It was.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't say anything about no police coverage.
But I'm just saying, I'm just saying you sent the text. So I guess, the point, my point being is we gotta be careful because it means it constitutes the same thing that you were saying that we had issues with before.
I understand.
And we're trying to be open here, so I mean, I'm just, I'm just being open, open to it, so that.
No, I understand.
You understand what we're coming from, because it's like, if I would have responded to it, then basically I would have said, okay, I'd agree to your, or disagree with your point, but then we just have a meeting. And you know, that, that, that kind of negates the whole point of what happened, openness and transparency. So as we went through this whole process, as we moved forward, you know, we had this open investigation about the police department and all that stuff. And you know, you know, we wanted to make sure it was a third party, even though, I mean, there, you know, you have different opinions, but the point was, we wanted to make sure that.
Everything's out there.
Because I mean, it's easy to set at the computer and say, you know, we have all this corruption going on here or whatever and make statements when, and in reality, I mean, they don't have all the facts, they don't know what's going on. You don't know what papers people sign. I mean, you gotta be very careful, I mean, because it's easy to set back or be anonymity when you write something on the computer, screen it in blogs somewhere versus what reality is. And that's, you know, and, and we all want, we all want to have a good reputation. We all want to do the right thing for the community. We don't want to take a fall, you know, with our.
Right.
You know, all you ask is your reputation. I mean, that's what we, that's what we strive, we do the right things, the right people and have a reputation. We don't want to destroy it because of, you know, inaccuracies or, you know, this bullshit, stuff out there, stop reality. So I'm just saying that.
No, I appreciate you saying that. That's fine.
I just, I think it's important that, I mean, I just wanted to hear that. It's not, I mean, I, I respect your opinion, but at the same token, we can understand where we come from, too.
Sure.
You know, I'm just, that's all I'm saying.
Thanks for saying that, so.
And, and while we're on the same type of subject, you know, like the Facebook thing to where you have on there, I got, who's going to get the black, find the black box first or I get the resume from the place there. Whenever you put stuff like that on there, I will never ever answer you on there. I will not call you. You call me and say, hey, let's get together and do it. Appreciate putting that kind of stuff on Facebook and, and just putting it out. And there's, there's no real rhyme or reason for that. You're trying to make something out of nothing.
Well, all I based that on was that night.
And I, and I said that, and I did get busy, and I did forget to call you that day, but then when I seen that on Facebook, I'm not going to call you. I, it, I'm turning it off.
Well, by the time you hit Facebook, it was a week later.
No.
You said you were going to call me next day.
You said three, four days.
Okay, four days, four days later. And you sat right here and said, I'll call you tomorrow.
And I said, and I just said that I got busy, I had doctor's appointments.
And for four, four days, you were totally busy for four days.
And what difference does it make anyhow? Well, what do you want to see on those resumes?
Three professionals in the law enforcement business contacted me personally.
Why are they contacting you? That's because you put it on Facebook for them to contact you and you're not the one that deals with it.
No, there's more to it than that with some former officers that I'm not going to get into.
I mean, you're.
But they wanted to know if their resume was even considered. That's all I wanted to find out.
Former officers that were employed in this village?
No, no, three professionals that applied for the chief's position said, I never heard a word as my resume being considered. And I said, I have no idea.
But we want to know why they contacted you instead of the mayor or our lawyer.
They actually contacted somebody else who contacted me, some former officers that worked here.
Oh, I explained that.
But what's the difference? They wanted to know if their resume was considered.
That's just like you pulling stuff off, off the police's page and putting it on yours and having them contact you for resumes. Don't shake your head.
Encouraged anybody to contact me.
Don't, don't do that.
Well, print it on, show me.
I got it.
Okay, let's see it. I've never encouraged someone to contact me with a resume.
But I think what's the thing that we really want to bring here is that really, I mean, we, we have a structure here where we have an administrator, we have information that needs to come here and then the council itself, and we need to present it to the table here so we can discuss. And I think the problem is when you go under, behind the door or not bringing out, you open this, that's, that's where we get, everybody gets in trouble and everybody gets frustrated. The issue is, whatever we do, it has to be open and has to be here presented in the meetings so we can discuss and talk about it. We can have different opinion and that's okay. That's what, that's what it's all about.
It's okay to agree to disagree. That's not a problem.
But, but you gotta be careful, is, you know, you can't, you know, you can't get, you know, make, make some kind of a agreement with somebody or you bring something forward and it's not going through the procedural things. We can, we can track and understand what, you know, what our needs are and what we're trying to do. That's how we get in trouble. That's, that's how, how you make mistakes. You don't, you don't vet people properly or, or, or whatever, then you, you make a decision and then you get in trouble, something, something down the road happens and then, okay, you didn't do the right thing. Then you're, then you're either negating some of the rules and regulations of the, of the, of our charter or our, our rules and regulations or, or.
We don't have a charter.
Or not, not charter, but I'm talking rules and regulations or, or the, our revise code because we didn't follow, follow the procedural rules or whatever. We gotta be very careful how we do things. And, and let's face it, I mean, if you look at the book, I mean, there's no way that any of us can remember all that stuff. That's why we keep books so you can look up information. Because there's no way that you can remember all these rules and regulations. If you question something or you're not sure about something, you have to look it up or ask Rick to look into it because we have to make sure we do it right. Because sooner or later, it's going to come back and bite your butt if you do something wrong.
And I really took offense at the, the email or the whatever came back that said we were the most sneaky, corrupt council people, even from the city of Detroit.
Did I write that?
It was answered to one of your posts.
Can't help what other people write.
Well, yeah, but you invite this stuff. Why do you do this?
Why do you have a Facebook page in the village's name that says it's not affiliated with the village?
What's that?
Why do you have a Facebook page in the village's name and it says that it's not affiliated with the village?
It's been in existence for years.
No, no, no. I'm asking you right now because now it is, you're a council member.
Okay. If you remember at the one meeting in the other room.
I don't care about twenty years ago. I don't care about two years ago.
You gave me a, he paid me a dollar at the council meeting to create a, uh, website.
Right, and then, and then.
Absolutely.
So that's how it all started.
And then we told you your services were no longer needed.
Correct.
So then you bought the right.
But now it still says on the header on that page that it's not affiliated with the village.
You're right. So people understand it's not.
But it is, but it is. But you're on it. You're, you're a administrator of it.
But it is. You're a minister.
That's how it can be. I mean, you're elected official. So you are part of the village.
Well, for one, there's more than one administrator to that page. I am one of them. You're right.
Yeah, you're exactly right. So it is affiliated with the village, you best know.
So I don't know, you just have to look at it as, as a conflict of interest. You gotta be careful because now, you know, once, once you cross, cross the line, you're on another side of the fence.
Well, we, we may want to have Rick look into that. I don't see it that way, but.
I don't know. I mean.
Well, okay. Um, my legal work is for the village only. It's not for individual, whether it's private websites or not, whether it's conflicts between council members or not, whether somebody's alleging slander or libel, that, that is not something that I, as the village attorney, uh, would handle because I only represent the interests of the village, actually.
Well, that's what this sounds like.
Well, no, 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 no. Stop. And, and I, this is going to be very important. So that if, say, somebody alleges slander is spoken, libel is written, somebody alleges one of those, that's a conflict between people and that's a political matter. My job is actually not political at all. Mine is to keep the village out of trouble. And so my first loyalty, actually under the law, is for the village alone and not for anybody here.
Right.
And so, and so when there are political conflicts between people, doesn't mean I don't have opinions in my mind. And nobody can say they're not partial. But, so where does my partiality have to lie? With the village alone, not with individuals.
Right.
Uh, so it's going to lie with the Howard Advice Code. Uh, and of course, for example, in, in the last, um, occurrence that occurred here, I can't investigate because my job is always to protect the village and say the village is not liable. The only time you're going to hear me strongly criticize anybody is if you start admitting liability on the record for the village for something. It's like, uh-uh, the village is my client. Mm-hmm, we're not going to admit liability for something. And see, that's my job. And I do also try and keep people out of trouble a, as much as I can, but, um, you know, it, it, and I think part of the conflict then also is, is, what, at what point is, and something that will be a question will be, at what point is somebody a reporter of events? Or is it a private issue? And what point is it a public issue in a public law? So in a role that I've just explained, understand things that people say individually here, whether it's on a computer or spoken, the village is not responsible for defending libel and slander actions. That's that own individual's responsibility and between each other. Now, I would hope we would never get to that point because that's obviously a terrible way to run a government. Uh, and certainly people can always, um, uh, talk to each other and discuss issues without throwing mud or, or, or issues like that because if you're not civilized in how you deal with it, you're going to find that there's anarchy.
Right.
Um, what's it, there's a, let me see if there's a good way of putting it. Um.
Yeah, orbit voice.
No, no, no. I, I'm just, okay. Civilization is based on politeness, okay? And the Greek, the Greek, the Greek word for politeness is, is polis. And that's where you get city. And so politeness, and actually policeman has the same derivation also, politeness. So it's about being civil with each other and, and.
And truthful.
Well, of course truthful, but also polite as well. So I'm going to encourage, you know, as much as possible for people to be polite with one another, especially if anything's going to get done. It's good to air things out now.
And I think that's what, the idea, the whole situation is.
People can just end up being polite with each other. And it is, and, and no disrespect, it, it's, this is not, well, thank goodness, not the halls of Congress. This is a small village and we're all neighbors. Uh, and you never make enemies and neighbors. You're polite with neighbors. You don't have to agree, but you're always polite with neighbors.
And truthful.
But what's the truth? Now, what, where are you getting that? I don't understand.
I don't think you do to understand that.
What, what do we lie about?
Why do we lie about?
So I'm guessing from all that's being said, you'd like to see that page disappear? Is that your point?
No, I think that could be actually an asset myself.
The, 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 the issue comes down to Stan, I think it's just, you said, I understand that once you're on the other side of the fence, now that you're a council member, you gotta be careful about how you present things. Because we, we, I understand what you're saying. There's anonymity because of people that write, write back and make statements or whatever.
And their name is clearly right there.
That's right, but you incite them.
No, 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 wait a minute. No, just wait a minute. I'm just saying, people incite their own things. They, they make their own statements because of, of whatever their personal views are or whatever your life lessons is. But, but the problem is you gotta be really careful is that, you know, those statements go made, sometimes everybody thinks it's reality and it's not. I just want to make sure that when we're talking about stuff, and we're in a civil way here, that we're talking about reality, what the facts are, and we deal with facts and data and not hearsay. That's, that's my main point being there is that.
That's fair enough. If and when you see something that's not factual and that seems to be hearsay, point it out to me.
Yeah, so I mean.
Turn it up and show me.
Yeah, I mean, I understand. I mean, it's like.
From the past or from this point forward.
Because we understand this, the, the social media as, 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 you know, while the different venues they have nowadays, I mean, people can say all kinds of things. So we just gotta be careful that we, we just manage what we're, we're dealing with as far as community and what, and this, and this, and the decisions we're making is for the community. And it's not about what's in this psych world. We're not saying that, but the point is, you know, people get frustrated because really, you know, people really care and they see that stuff. And then, you know, it does cut them quick when somebody's, you know, they're trying to do the right thing and you see that stuff, you know, with that negativity in any kind of society.
Yeah, we need to be positive, not negative.
As much as possible. I mean, if you got, you know, I mean.
Maybe I should show you all the private messages I get from people that don't want to be named. That blow your mind.
Well, that's, that's probably true, but you know, again, people have their opinions because they don't have all the facts. They only have the facts that they want to read or.
Why are those coming to you and not the village? If they're questioning what's going on in the village, why don't they ask? Come to the meeting.
Because. Because. Yeah, I, I wish they would, you know, that would be good.
I mean, I mean, I guess the point being Stan, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but if, if, they have honest grievances, that's fine, you can present the grievances. But to present them in a positive way, what, why, why do they have the grievances? What are the issues are? I mean, it's, it's, that's what the point is. I mean, that's what we're having to hear of, that, that if the community has grievances about something, they need to present them to us so we can understand what they are so we can try to figure out how to deal with them.
You see how many people are at the meeting?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I mean, we're, we're looking at the, the facts that we have, we're, we're doing the finances or whatever, just trying to, you know, because the place, I mean, the town was, wasn't that long ago, was almost bankrupt. So now we finally got things straightened out and we're trying to do the right things to get the community fixed up, the streets, the water treatment plant, whatever. And, you know, keeping, keeping the assets of, of the community fixed. And that's, that's what we're trying to do.
And I think anybody, anybody here on council and so forth, they, they, you gotta have the best interest of the village. I mean, that's all there is to it. We are working for the people of the village.
Right.
And if they see something that's not right, all they gotta do is come to us. I mean, come to the meeting, voice their opinion and we'll do the best we can do. I mean, if there's something they're not seeing.
I mean, how many times have you posted for people to come to the meeting? And how many people really, I, I mean, I, I'm not saying people don't care, okay? Don't, don't get me wrong there.
Right.
But what's really frustrating to me is when, when I hear you say that you've got these emails or whatnot where people are complaining, are they just complaining to complain or do they have some legitimacy to that complaint?
I guess a lot of people just, I don't know if it's guts or what they lack to, to come to a meeting and present their issues. I don't know.
But what could be that upsetting?
And we, I mean, we haven't really believed it or anything, like, you know. I guess the other thing, too, I mean, you know, I, I know there's, there's a big thing because there's, there's too many Harrison's on the, in the council. I know, I know that's a big thing, when the callers go, and whatever, whatever. The point is, the point is, in reality, everybody has an opportunity to, like you did, run, run and get back. And the problem is, you know, nobody wants to engage in society anymore. You know, they're all busy with their own lives and the problem is, somebody's got to deal with it or, or you don't have a community, so.
It, it, I do have a funny story for everyone here and most of us are aware, there's a while where we just had a hard time getting council people. And I always remember whispering to Linda, the first person who complains, appoint them to council. What did I just do? It's, no, please, anybody, fill the seats. They come and complain, great, put them on council.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, I. So Stan, I want, I want you to understand, I mean, I respect her.
Maybe that's why they're right to come to meetings.
You gotta understand, I, I, so it's gotta, it's gotta, you gotta find that balance because once you go, once you go on the other side, you just have to find the balance so they're all working together and not against each other. I mean, if you got honest agreements or a disagreement or whatever that is, you know, voice it. That's what they have these meetings for. You know, but, you know, we just gotta be careful how we do things because, you know, the social media can get out of control and it's just.
Well, again, I, I encourage you to point out anything I say that's not factual or disrespectful to you. Let me know, please.
I think the, the main thing is just make sure that the facts are dict, on, if you're going to do something or, or make a statement, just make sure the facts are supported or whatever, whatever your position is.
Well, I, I, that's my point. I think they are. I don't know of, and I could be wrong. I don't know of one single issue that hasn't been factual.
The picture of liar, liar pants on fire, the guy, household in the brain saying, you, use it. How is that not, that's ridiculous.
The one thing that you gotta be careful and, and anybody's been in management that deals with, uh, with craftsmen and other people around, they're always looking for that guy to say just that one thing so they can climb on board and stir up the pot. It's not the person actually said it. They're just taking advantage of it. And we see it all the time. We call them pot servers at work. I mean, they do it all the time. And they're having a ball. They're having fun. They're taking a lot of glee out of making everybody all slice and miserable. Who gets to hold the bag? Okay. I mean, that's what happens. And it doesn't do anything positive for anybody. I have not seen or heard anything at any of these council meetings in the last four years that wasn't specifically spelled out in, in the newspaper unless it was an executive session.
Right.
I mean, that's the honest to God truth. I mean, there's, everything's been above board. If it wasn't, I wouldn't be here.
Right.
I mean, that's, my, my reputation's worth more than that to me. So.
Did, Brandon, did you have a question or something? Like you were raising your hand?
Not that my opinion probably matters, but.
No, it does.
Yes, it does.
And as an administrator of, I, I run City of Fall Stories webpage, I also, or Facebook page, I run, obviously, the police departments, I do our FOPs, I do several of them. You, it, it is your responsibility to make sure that things that are said, even if it's not said by you, that are detrimental to the village or detrimental to whatever you're representing, it's your responsibility to take those down. I'm sure you probably have it on your phone as well as I do. As soon as so, somebody comments, pops up on my phone. If it has cuss words, something that questions the authority of the council, of the mayor, of the police department, that it is your responsibility as administrator, as one of the administrators, to make sure that that stuff isn't on there, even if it's not posted by you. So as not to draw undue, uh, negative light on the village or, you know, the council. I, I think what, some of the stuff you put up is great, you know, putting up about, you know, the river melding and things like that, uh, talking about the park and the baseball, that's great. That's what that page is for, to promote that stuff. And I'm not saying some of the stuff that you put on there is your opinion and you may, you may not agree, but then you always, you're always going to have those people, as he said, jump on board and want to put, uh, you know, oh, why don't we rename it Harrisonville, this and that, or, oh, we only have two people, you know, working in, in the village now. Yeah, I mean, that's, everyone knows that, but with that kind of stuff, it's detrimental. Uh, makes, brings negative light and people get discouraged. That needs to be, if it's going to be associated with the village, in my opinion, it needs to be the positive stuff that happens. Hey, we're having the fishing derby out at the park. We're planning for the Fourth of July. You know, we got good things coming. You gotta make, make, shine good light on us. And, and it's not, I'm not.
No, no, I appreciate your input.
And, and it's, you have to make sure that when other people are posting and it's detrimental to us, that those comments are taken down. Not only just the cussing and things like that, but anytime anybody posts anything negative about the City of Fall Story or the police department stuff, that's going to come immediately down. And I will send them a message immediately saying, if you have a problem, get ahold of whoever can change that or come to the meetings. You know, it's, it's easy for anybody to sit behind a computer and say, you know, this is bull crap, blah, 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 even if their name's attached to it. When you're man to man face to face, it's a lot harder to bring up those things and then people won't just be bitching, they'll be coming up with solutions, too. If you want to come to me with a problem, come to me with a solution as well.
That's why they're not here.
Right. And that, and that's what concerned me is, for the, I, I've seen a lot of the former officers posting things. That's great. But come with a solution. Obviously, there was no solution. They couldn't work together for some reason, whatever happened. You know, and now they want to post things negative off the police front. You represent the village. You can't have, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put up with it. If somebody posts it on our page or it's on you guys' page, it'll be taken down. Um, we, we can't have detrimental stuff, especially when we're trying to build it up and make it better than it was before.
I've seen a Facebook page devoted to, uh, shrouding the events of the, of the Old Fort Betsville School. And, uh, it's a well-known person that, that, those persons names on there, like. And I've seen a couple articles where somebody was trying to turn it dark, okay? And if that person running that immediately challenged that person, no, I don't believe that. I mean, if you want to prove it, come to prove it, but I don't believe that. And that was it. You didn't, I mean, there, there was a few added in there, but for the most part, no, they, they kept on the street. If you want to make something, come see us.
Well, it's right in the handbook about negative and derogatory comments towards others within the village and, and employees in the village.
Yeah, it's from the handbook which it's signed for, so. I mean, I'm just saying, just, I think it's just important that we all have this open discussion because so we can have a.
Oh, sure.
You know, any dialogue coming from, we're all trying to do the right thing, you know, and it's, it's important to have a good dialogue and, and be open and be honest about what your position is so we can discuss it. Because I mean, that's what this is all about. I mean, we just don't, you know, you know, we're not a bunch of yes people here. We all, we have honest discussions and talk about things, you know, and that's why, that's why I like to, like to keep it.
Now, I, now I do want to make it clear, a handbook is an employee handbook versus elected officials. That's important. And also even, and, and now I'm going to, I do have to make sure that we remain legal in all of this, too. Employees, you know, in regards to their duties and discussing things, uh, must be, uh, careful what they say. But if they want to talk about global warming, that's their First Amendment constitutional right to talk about global warming all day. Well, I'm sorry, the new ice age. Let's get this straight. Uh, I've been praying for global warming unsuccessfully. That's their constitutional right, but that's, that's directed towards employees versus elected officials. But I, I'm just asking elected officials to get along with each other as much as you can or we're going to look like the Taiwanese parliament and break out in fistfights and shit.
Right.
Which is entertaining.
Yeah, it's great. I'm not sure if I can date mom or not, though.
She just kicked me twice.
I wouldn't count on it.
Well, I appreciate all your input, and I respect your, your input.
I, I just wanna see us grow and be in a positive light, everything should be, everything that you'll see on the police department's webpage is to benefit this village, to make us look maybe even better than we actually are, um, and to promote, promote the park, and promote the things that we do have, we, we don't have much, it, it's a small village, you know, I spent my summers here, there's not much to do, but it's a safe place to live, you know, people have lived here for many, many years.
Hundreds of years.
Hundreds of years, um, you know, so, so we wanna, we wanna promote that, that's my key then.
No, I appreciate that.
I just hope that everybody can walk out of the room and talk just like we normally do, like we always have, everyone's voice in the conference.
And if you wanna look at those resumes right now, if, about your three people that's on there, or whatever, I got them out in the car, I've had them ready, but I was damn determined that I wasn't gonna give them to you while I was on Facebook like that, so, and that's just the way it's gonna be.
I like this one, I don't get on Facebook.
I don't get on it very often.
I got on.
Unless somebody tells me, well, somebody wrote something like it.
And anybody but a family member gets on there, that is a kick.
You wanna look at them right now?
I'll have a.
I don't remember the three names, so I don't think I have them with me.
That one's gonna be plundered.
They're often, be fortunate, so I don't get on here. Maybe I'll bring the names with me next time, and that'll.
Oh, I made the most of it, Jared.
Okay.
Did anybody?